Okay, we left off at the engineering department. And like I said, we've got a lot of departments to go and not a lot of time. So if you just want to give just a couple minutes to kind of talk about, you know, a couple of your accomplishments, goals, and then any of your major increases over a thousand, and then we can go into questions.
Okay, thank you Shelley. Consultments for seventeen, we continue to improve the downtown business district with alley projects. We do have a new project getting done with the First Avenue Railroad closure. That'll be a big project change for traffic downtown. Continuing with our sidewalk ADA project, we did rebid the Jackson Park parking lot and bike trail improvements, and that construction should be coming shortly. Other than that, the new storm shelter is well underway out at the soccer complex. I'll give you an update at the next work session. Goals for eighteen, we're going to continue to implement our new pavement management program. I've set the CIP budget up to handle that as best we can. According to our budget, it will need to be revised as budgets get adjusted, of course, but we're moving forward with that. We continue to assist other departments with various projects such as skate parks and bike trails and storm shelters. We also strive to better coordinate our projects with municipal utilities, the county and state organizations. Currently, we're spending more and more time with the South Dakota DOT on preparing for the two projects on Highway two twelve in the near future. Also, we'll have a coordinated project next year with the Highway eighty-one roundabout at Twentieth Avenue. With that, I guess that's our goals. We do want to review our permit procedures. We're going to look at our planning and zoning procedures a little bit more in detail and maybe move towards re-adopting engineering and development standards in the community.
Shane, does that explain why we're looking at a significant increase in the anticipated amount of permits issued for eighteen versus seventeen?
Well, we also implemented new permits that we hadn't been collecting for a few years, so we're reissuing some permits when it comes to work that happens in the public right-of-way. Prior to this, we didn't really pay attention to where people put demolition dumpsters, for instance. And since that is something that occupies the public right-of-way from time to time, I felt that we needed to have the right to know where those were going to be placed and advise the emergency services folks what encumbrances they might see along roadway. So that's one example of a permit that we've added. But we just feel that we're going to do a better job at collecting permits that impact the traveling public on our roadways. So with that, and we never tracked our permits issued before. That was a line item I just added now to kind of help us track. It's kind of similar to what building services does as well. So with that, I guess I'll run into the budget summary. For the most part, licenses and permits and a few other increases, other expenditures, you know, really not anything fancy there. It's just making sure that we have money to train our staff accordingly and make sure that we can stay on top of our jobs and serve the public. So we actually have a decrease in several of those line items when it comes to expenditures because of the change in salaries. You know, we have a new assistant engineer who has a substantially lower salary than the previous position, so some adjustments with regard to that. But other than that, I don't have a lot to say. Consulting services, we do have a lot of bridge and box culvert type projects that our staff don't have the expertise for. So we do have a little bit of an increase on professional services to reflect that, that we would need to hire that work out. So any questions?
Shane, have we looked at trying to send anyone to training on those type of items to see if we can cut down on that? Would that be economically feasible to do that?
Given the volume of work that we do manage, specialized projects like that is probably a better realm for a consultant because it does take a certain level of expertise and continuing education on some of those things. And to be honest, the consultants, they are really geared up towards that. We have two or three local consultants that their staff expertise is actually doing bridge-type structures, so it's not feasible for us to amp up our staff to mirror what they already do.
Okay, thank you.
Shane, I've got a question. Okay, we're looking at a twenty thousand dollar increase for consulting services on one page. We go to the next page, the mayor's budget actually is not reflecting a change from seventeen to eighteen.
That's probably the difference between what I requested and what was granted.
Okay, so in effect, we're not looking at an increase then as far as outside consulting services?
Yes, the twenty thousand dollars is what I requested, and it's not reflected in the budget.
Right, so in other words, it's not being suggested that that be given? Okay, so the question then, I must ask, where are those services going to come from? Are we planning those projects that are going to require engineering services?
What we'll try to do is implement those services as the project then comes forward and make that a part of the project budget. So if, for instance, one of the requests I have is to replace a box culvert on Third Avenue Southeast. I have a construction budget, and then the preliminary consulting fees probably would have been utilized for some of that to do a study to see what size that culvert needs to be before you go to construction, but we'll just have to iron that out.
Do we do that now?
No.
Add it into the overall project?
I'm not following.
Consulting fees, do we add it already into the projects?
Some, a lot of times we try to, but we can't always.
So we have these projects that we have planned, right?
Correct.
And some of them are going to require engineering services that we would like to have consulting services on.
Correct.
But we're not budgeting for that. So that tells me then we have included those consulting needs in the individual projects or not?
Well, to some extent, they are. Portions of it.
I think he wrote that before I cut the budget, and I took numerous projects out of the budget because we didn't have, we had to cut money. And there are fewer projects than Shane requested in my proposed budget. And there's a smaller consultant fee in my budget than in his. Fewer projects, less consultant fee.
So we...
He wrote that probably.
Correct. So by reducing the project numbers, the consulting dollars aren't as necessary.
You know, and some of those things we can do in-house, and I, you know, I don't know if he even broke that down with the projects or if it was a generalized number, but we have fewer projects, less money total than his request, and I also took some money out of the consultant fees.
So we're going to be good from an engineering standpoint for the projects that we have budgeted in your proposal? Okay, that's why I want to make sure.
I think so too. I think it's just an adjustment. That page didn't get adjusted with the, to reflect the proposed budget, no.
Can I ask one question too, by the way? You made a comment. Have we hired a new assistant city engineer?
Yes, we did.
Has that been announced?
I thought it was, but...
I've never heard that.
Anyway, we hired, his name is Colin Paulson. He is a native of Watertown. Went to high school here, graduated from high school here, went to SDSU, moved out to the west coast for a number of years, and now he's returned to work for us. He started August seventh, so he's really only entering his second week here, so...
Some of you probably remember Colin. He worked for the engineering department one summer as an engineer. He was already working as an engineer in private practice, and he was between jobs, and so many of us already knew him.
Just a clarification, the mayor and I had a sidebar conversation a minute ago. I was confused because presumably we'll have a full complement of engineer and assistant in twenty eighteen then, whereas we didn't in twenty seventeen, but yet we're budgeting a decrease in our salaries for twenty eighteen, and that's because of the relative pay scales of who we had versus who we are going to have?
And that makes a difference all the way down, how much retirement, how much FICA you pay, how much work comp. So each line item has a bit of a decrease for that overall decrease. Does anybody else have any questions on the engineering department? If not, we'll move on to water resources. And this is kind of one of those little baby departments that kind of gets overlooked. It has relatively small budget. There is very little change from the seventeen to eighteen budget, basically just the insurance premiums based on actual costs. I can let Shane give a little bit of information on what gets funded out of this, and then you guys can ask any changes.
Okay, so one notable difference is if you turn to the second page, we do have twenty thousand dollars in expert and consultant services. And if you look at the goals on the first page, what that twenty thousand dollars, or what I hope to spend that twenty thousand dollars on is to have somebody, consultant, potentially look at our comprehensive plan to identify regional storm ponds and wetland bank locations or to enhance those type of things. We've got, for instance, there's some interest in possibly doing a wetland bank along the Willow Creek Drive area, and we would want to utilize a consultant to help us through that process because that takes a high level of specialty in creating those wetland banks, so that's the only significant change in that, water resources.
Shane, we had talked several months ago about looking at an engineering study as far as controlling the inflow. That's not where this, that's part of our CIP budget as I see it coming up later on. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, in other words, that's not in here anyplace?
Correct.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions about water resources? If not, we will move on to street department. I will let Rob go ahead and go through quickly a couple of the accomplishments, any goals in creating the budget, and then some of the significant increases.
Okay, thanks Shelley. Couple highlights for two thousand and seventeen that we had, basically like Shane had mentioned about the pavement management system. We work hand-in-hand with engineering on a lot of projects. That's going to be something that's going to be very helpful for us, so we're excited about that. The First Avenue conversion, just going through that whole process and getting that milled, overlaid, striped, re-signed, working with the DOT and engineering on that, worked out really well, so we're pretty proud of that. The other thing, a couple of things, the parking lot at the airport, we assisted with that, excavated the area out and planned all the mill and overlay of Airport Drive and using those millings at the same time to build the parking lot, so that worked out really, really well, so we're proud of that. But some of our goals for eighteen, basically implementing a fleet maintenance program to help keep our equipment up to date. That's something we've been wanting to do, just haven't gotten around to it. The other thing is looking forward to trying to add an administrative assistant to our staff full-time. We have a part-time staff member right now, so we're working on that in this budget year. Let's see, I suppose I'll get to the meat of this so we can move on. All right, our budget as far as, if you take a look, let's see here.
Rob, what's your deal?
Yeah.
When we get down to the number of blocks cracked sealed versus seal-coated, there's a big shift from seventeen to eighteen in numbers.
Right.
Can you explain the thought there and what the...
We did, let's see here, let me take a look here where we're at here. Blocks cracked sealed. Yeah, actually, for two thousand and seventeen, we allocated, we have four hundred thousand dollars a year for crack seal and chip seal that we use, or for surface seal. And we actually, because we were caught up pretty well with our chip seal throughout town, we shifted, and we have a lot of streets that need crack seal to try to save those roads. So we shifted and putting more into our crack sealing this year and less into our chip seal. Our chip seal for seventeen, we have just a south bypass, Pheasant Ridge Drive, and then I think it's Thirty-Ninth Street, just between Stones Truck Stop and the hotel out there. That's all we're doing for chip seal for seventeen, but we will be doing roughly three hundred and twenty-five blocks of crack seal this year. So we just shifted where we were putting the dollars.
The last line, did you really repair or replace nine hundred signs last year?
Yeah, what the deal was is that was still part of our federal mandate for our reflectivity of our signs, and that's why the number is so high on that. We were finishing that up. We did the last phase of that last year. Okay, let's see here, I guess we got there, Spence. All right, as far as you'll see under the fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for personal services, what we're looking at doing here is, right now, the part-time salary for a secretary we have is eighteen thousand dollars, and we also have a street maintenance worker that we're looking at eliminating that position to try to get a full-time position for our secretary. That's something we've needed for years down at the street department, and we have that part-time right now, and so we'd take those dollars and put towards a full-time position, which would come out to about thirty-one thousand dollars. That would be put towards that full-time position. And would put us at about twelve thousand dollars remaining that we would need to make that happen. That's the first thing on the list. Let's see, construction materials, you'll see we've increased by five thousand dollars we've requested. I think we were at a hundred and, what were we at? Hundred and eighty thousand. I'm asking to bump that up to a hundred and eighty-five thousand. We do push the limit on that every year. It's a line we use for a lot of our gravel and cold mix, and then we also, when we hire other contractors to do some pothole patching for us, we use that line. Let's see here. We did decrease our fuel by five thousand dollars. We do use a lot of fuel every year, so, but we were able to decrease that. Traffic control materials, we're asking for an increase of a thousand dollars. We do, we're trying to stripe everything in town twice a year if possible. We're working on that, so little increase in paint. Let's see, de-icing sand, all we did there is we're asking to move the, let's see, move that to the snow budget for de-icing sand. It was under the street budget before. It just makes more sense to have it in the snow budget, so that's when you see the thirty thousand dollars there. Machinery and equipment, as far as our street budget, we're looking at purchasing a ninety-five hundred dollar, or we have a budget, we're asking for ninety-five hundred dollars for purchasing another paint striper. We currently have two of them. We keep white in one, yellow in the other, and we'd like to have blue also. So, and then replacing two of our zero-turn mowers for forty thousand dollars there. And then our railroad crossing fund, that eight thousand dollars, you might have recognized that every year we ask for that. That's just basically, if we have an issue we have to take care of with the railroad, we have dollars available there for that. So when we do things like those crossings we did a couple of years ago, that sometimes there's repairs and we get billed for that, so...
Rob, do we do a lot of blue paint striping ourselves, or is there something that we could contract just that portion of versus...
There's not a lot of it. There really isn't. The big thing, the reason we're asking for that is currently we keep those machines suited up with the color, either white or yellow, and to clean them out takes a lot of chemical to do it. It's quite extensive to do that. It's time-consuming. So we were hoping to take one of our older machines and put blue in there, use that as our blue machine, and then use the new machine for yellow or white, which we use quite a bit.
My wonder, or my question was, instead of buying piece of equipment for something we don't use very much, just contract the blue out because there's people that do do it?
And we could do that. That is a possibility.
Rob, this probably isn't a fair question to ask, but in light of Shelley's, and I appreciate your email that you sent out earlier today about challenging us and challenging department heads as far as, okay, does your budget accomplish your overall goal or mission for your department? If we're going to get complaints in town, it's going to be about our streets. I mean, does this budget give you what you need to accomplish your goal or mission for the street department this next year?
It definitely helps. The other area which actually goes, what you're talking about here is I've asked to, well, and that be for our mill and overlay budget, I've asked to increase that by fifty thousand dollars. We, in the past, I can't tell you how many years ago, but I'd guess six or seven years ago, we were able to get twelve thousand ton of mix a year for our budgeted dollars, which at the time was around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think. Now for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're getting around a little over nine thousand ton of mix. That twelve thousand ton would overlay about five miles of road, and currently we're only overlaying around three point four, three and a half miles of road a year. We're just not keeping up. So the increase will definitely help, but we could definitely use more.
What kind of mowers are you looking to replace?
We have two grasshopper zero-turn mowers that we're looking to replace. I believe they're O-nine models. They get a lot of time. We use them a lot in the summer, but they are starting to wear out, and we're starting to have to replace a lot of parts in them, so those are the two we're looking at replacing.
Do you guys use like a diesel mower or a gas?
Yeah, both, the two that we have are both diesels.
Is there any other questions for street department?
I got one more. You're asking for a fifty thousand increase for that mill and overlay to get back to that twelve thousand, was that what it was?
Twelve thousand ton a year.
What would the increase need to be to get to that?
I think would be over a million dollars a year, because actually I think this year we had, we had carried over some dollars, and I believe we calculated we'd get about twelve thousand ton. Does that sound right, Shane? I think that's what we had this year.
Yeah, I think that we were closer to that twelve thousand ton in this project. One thing that I'll support Rob on immensely is, we also start looking at our mill and overlay project from a little bit different window. In the past, we've always just plainly milled two inches off anomaly and replaced it with two inches. Where we can, we're going to start to review where we maybe only mill the edges and then do an overlay over the whole street so that, we're not just going to wholesale mill everything. We're going to try to find ways to find advantages, not spend all of our money milling and put more money into the overlay portion of that work. So we're trying to be innovative too as managers of the money and the projects to try to stretch those projects a little bit further than we used to by changing how we approach the project. And so it's kind of a two-pronged tack. We have to ask for money that we think is appropriate, but we also have to manage that money more efficiently, and one way to do that is not to mill as much as we did in the past.
What kind of increase in amount would you be able to do if you got that perfected? Ten percent, fifteen percent?
Well, the reason we had a carryover from the year before, actually, was because we did an experimental project where we, on our residential streets, we didn't mill all the way across, and the money that we saved milling, we carried over and added tonnage to this year's project. So we know that it can stretch us a little bit further. It's not going to be consistent every year. For instance, this year, we picked heavy traffic streets that required the full two-inch mill and overlay, so we weren't able, we weren't able to do the same thing this year that we did the year before, but when we can, that's our goal.
And what Shane's saying there too, if you look on, it's not up there, but if you look at our cost per block for overlay, you'll see in sixteen, we had about thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars per block. And by milling the edges and doing a thinner lift, we were able, you know, to stretch our dollar further. And you'll see like in seventeen, so far, we're closer to nineteen thousand dollars a block. So like Shane was saying, some of our roads, like Fourteenth Avenue, Tenth Avenue, Fourteenth Avenue especially, we can't, we're not going with that thinner lift, so it does cost more to do that, so... All right, let's see here, actually, I think that...
Did anybody have any other questions before we go on to snow removal?
Rob, yeah, I did one real quick. So when you take off less on the mill overlay, in the future, when you have to redo it, is it going to cost more to redo it then since, or do you have to go deeper or...
No, as far as, I mean, like this year, we did do, some of our streets, we took off an inch and a half and put two inches back on. I think we did that on First Avenue South. You don't necessarily have to take off the same amount each time. The big thing is, once you start milling that off, sometimes if you have a half inch left from the old overlay, it'll peel off. So that's what you don't want to have is a lot of that, so you try to usually get through that old mat. Any other questions?
You've got, you had requested the tractor, I believe, the loader and attachments tractor with side mower?
Right.
And those have not been granted? Are you...
Yeah.
Are you okay with where you're at on that?
Right, the loader, we are currently going out to bids here real quick for a new loader that actually was budget dollars I carried over from sixteen. We did have, the loader that we were going to replace is still, it's still functioning well, and we did do a lot of maintenance to it two years ago. Stuck some dollars into repairs, and we feel like we can get through another year with that. The tractor side mower, actually that will work out fine too. We have a new guy doing some of our work with that and doing our spraying in town, our weed spraying, and we haven't had to use that tractor that much this year, so we're okay to get by another year without that.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move on to snow removal. You want to go through that?
Yeah, okay, a couple of highlights for the snow removal. Of course, in seventeen, we implemented a brine system that we're using. Didn't get a lot of time to use it because it was towards the end of the season. And then, of course, we wind Road eighty-one to the center this year, which was different for us. It seemed to work out okay. The only problem we found was getting contractors in there the first night to haul it out, so that was the only problem we ran into. Let's see. Goals, of course, with our snow removal, I'm always looking for ways to improve speed. We want to get faster at removing the snow. We wanna get faster at removing the snow. Um, that's a tough one there, especially with snow gates. People like the snow gates, but they definitely slow us down. Um, I do have, just so you know, I do have, uh, on September sixth, the street superintendent of Sioux Falls, Galen Huber, is actually gonna make a trip up here and sit down with us and show us their snow removal program and actually go over ours with us and see what kinda ideas he might have. So, should be pretty interesting. Um, uh, September sixth. I think it's the sixth. Yeah. Um, and you're all welcome to. One thirty? One thirty. So, if you want, we'll probably do it at the street department where we. Yeah. She's got it set up. So, you're sure, you're all welcome to come and attend that? All right. So, yeah, our goals for nineteen and beyond, basically, we wanna implement more brine usage, um, and also, uh, just improving our snow removal methods. That's two of the main things. So, as far as our snow removal, our budget pretty much, um.
Rob, just on page one there, you, you said you're gonna increase your brine usage, but that, that's the number of tons of sand and salt. That's going up by seventy-five percent. Is that, is that what you're referring to there, or is that something different?
Um, actually, no. And what's the brine would be, what we're currently using it for is a pre-treatment.
Okay.
So, that, uh, the salt would come out of that, but actually, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the little bit we did use it, it's, it doesn't take much salt brine to, to go a long ways, I guess I could say.
So, if, my, my understanding is that if you use that, the pre-treat, you gotta do less of the post-treat. Is that fair to say?
That's correct. Yeah.
So, but the boy, the sand and salt went way up, there's going way up on your budget.
Well, and part of that was we, we stockpiled a lot. We did have, uh, thirteen events last year that we dealt with, snow events. So, um, I think the previous year, I think we had nine or ten, I believe, and those, like, we had snow on May one this year. So, I think we even put down some sand on May one, if I remember right. So, um, but our, our bunker is completely full right now, sand, salt, mix. So, we probably won't be spending as much, um. Well, and actually, we do have, I'm projecting, let's see, three thousand, three thousand, uh, ton for eighteen, I see. But, but yeah, our bunker's plumb full. And all we do when we budget for, determine our snow events, we basically determine ten events is what we're estimating. And some, I mean, that's pretty close really. When you look at the history, we're usually close to that number. But like I say, this year we had thirteen events we dealt with. So, and I'm pretty sure most of us, I'd have to look back at our information, 'cause we document everything on that. But, um, I think we sand it on about every one of those. So.
Um, hey, Rob, I got a question for you. Are we, do we have any vehicles that will accommodate more snow gates? Or is that something we, we, would be beneficial to add additional snow gates?
Um, we do have one more machine right now. It's, it's our oldest motor grader. It's a six-wheel drive, and we could put that on there. Um, it's the only one we have rigged up for a wing right now. Um, so, we weren't planning on putting a gate on there. But if we did, the, the two areas we, we are not doing anything with the snow gate is the lake area or west of Twenty-first Street, basically, um, and south of Highway two twelve. I believe we are covering about everything else with snow gates at this time. Um, you know, we benefit, I think, south of two twelve. The lake is just a whole different animal. Snow gates, for the most part, would not be effective just 'cause of the wind. Um.
Rob, is, is that entire lake area, is that all contracted out?
It is. Uh, Pinky Burns does that yet for us. I think he's been doing that for twenty-five, thirty years. Um, we do work out there too. Obviously, we go out in sand, and after he's went through, if it's blowing and stuff, we'll go back out with trucks and kick the drifts back, that type of thing.
He, he does not have vehicles that will accommodate a snow gate, does he?
Um.
'Cause it, 'cause I hear a lot from the, the folks at Derby Downs, you know, they'd like to see that.
That's, that is, that's a good point. Summerwood, Derby Downs, some of the, those developments that are, you know, not as affected by the lake wind, um, you know, our areas, we could consider using them yet. So, um, I, as far as Pinky, I don't, I don't know if his blades, I think he does have one six-wheel drive blade, but I, I'm pretty sure that we'd be pretty hard pressed to get him put, to put one on.
Well, it might be such a thing where, where we may have to do that. If he would, if he would allow us to do that, we purchase the, the snow gate and put it on.
And, and we could do that. The, the one thing about the snow gates that, um, they require basically a four-man team compared to a three-man team. That's what's really shrunk our department in speed and efficiency is, prior to that, when you go through with a, a blade to do the main driving lane, you have a blade and you have a truck on the edge that's sanding and kicking the snow up over the curb, and then you have a loader following up behind cleaning the intersections. With a snow gate, you need a blade in the driving lane and then a blade on the edge to do the snow gate, a sander truck behind and a loader. So, it takes four guys per team rather than three. So, we're, we're kinda handicapped for, as far as people right now to, to expand more. So, that's kinda why we haven't pushed it any further than we have at this point. But we do have, like I say, we have one more machine we could put a snow gate on. So, if need be. Any other questions? Um, let's see here. Um, so as far as equipment though, um, let's see, chemicals, uh, we're good there. De-icing sand, we just moved that from the street budget to the snow budget. Let's see, dump truck with plowing sander. What we're asking for is, uh, basically, we wanna get another tandem axle dump truck. We currently have one. It's not set up for plowing. We have used it for sanding before. We do have a old sander box for it. But what we're looking at is, we're asking for a dump truck to, with an underbelly plow, which will act like a, a motor grader. It'll have the down pressure, the weight of the truck. So, when we go out on the highway or the lake, we, we can sand and scrape ice at the same time with that. That, and plus in the summer, with one tandem axle dump truck, we just find very often that one is just not enough. You haul twice a load with a tandem that you can a single axle truck. Single axles have their place. They're great for plowing in town and tight corners, that type of thing. But, um, hauling material in the summer, we need another tandem. I'd actually be reducing our single axle truck fleet by one by doing this. We'd get rid of one single axle and replace it with a tandem. And then as far as, uh, two snow plows and hitches, that's just basically to replace, we have on our, some of, a couple of our trucks, a plow's and, and hitch, which is what you mount the plow to, just plain wore out. They're, they're old and worn out. So, that's what the twenty-five thousand dollars would be for. And I think that covers the snow budget. Did I miss anything on that?
Does anybody have any questions about the snow removal budget? Okay. If not, oh. Otherwise, we'll move to the capital improvement, sales tax fund, otherwise affectionately known as Fund, Fund Two Twelve. Hear about that? That's our second penny, sales tax. And it kinda tells you basically that, that a previous council adopted an ordinance that matched state statute that restricted the use of these funds. And so, um, the requests reflect those. Um, we'll just, we'll kinda go by section. The first one is the public safety improvements. The biggest one on there is the fire truck. I know that, um, the fire department is, is on tomorrow. So, I told them if there's any questions I can answer, we can come back to this tomorrow. Um, this has been a, a truck that's been pushed back for quite some time. And, um, I think last year, it was basically committed that it would move forward, and, um, money was set aside and put into the restricted capital outlay, um, restricted cash account to cover that. So, um, current resources are not being allocated unless that's something that you want to have happen. But there is, um, a, a restricted cash account for capital outlay, for future capital, and that's where, um, this money will come from. So, um, that's why in a lot of these cuts, that one has remained in there. And, um, I, I hope everybody remembers that, but that, um, that was kinda the conversation that, that the truck needs to be replaced. Um, it's getting old and unreliable. And so, um, we just, we made an effort to put some money aside because it's, it's an easy one to cut when you have six hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars or whatever the number is of projects that you need to cut because you don't have enough money and you have too many projects. So, um, that's kinda the, the deal with that one and, and why that, that fire truck remains in there, even though, um, we had to cut some of the other projects because, um, as most of you know, when you see our sales tax projections, uh, they're not, uh, trending in, in a, in a positive direction. They're staying really flat, if not running between that half a percent to a percent down from the previous year. Um, and so, very guarded about that and, um, very, um, I guess for me being conservative, I wasn't really looking to make a whole lot of changes to any revenue projections. And because there has been some anticipated projects in the last three years that have come up and used reserves, um, I'm a lot more leery about having the expenditures exceed the anticipated revenues and using fund balance for some of those. Um, we've, we've done that in the past, always anticipating that some projects would come under budget, um, some would not be done, and you'd, you'd always have some excess fund balance. But, um, there seems to be, um, some projects that are coming up. Um, the airport is, is one of those projects. And there's nothing that you can do about those other than make sure that you have adequate fund balance in order to deal with that. And so, um, I've gotten more conservative even about budgeting the projects. I try to match them with the current revenue source and not anticipate using any fund balance. And we did that last year, and that's kind of what we're trying to do this year as well. So, that, um, it, it, it's easier for me when you say, do we have money? It's easier for me to look at that and not to have to try to look at each project, anticipate yay, nay, is it gonna go, is it gonna go under, is it gonna go over? Because I know that every year, our resources that we think we're gonna get in are gonna pay for the projects. Um, and so, I know what fund balance is available during out, during the year without doing a whole lot of analytical work and, and number crunching. So, that's kind of what this reflects. The second part is the street system improvements and then the storm sewer and flood control projects. And I guess maybe between the mayor and Shane and Rob, um, they're the ones that really, um, give the numbers for these, and, um, they can tell you about the, the projects. The mayor can maybe go through, um, any of the projects that she did not support and her mayor's proposed, and we can have a, um, a short conversation about any of that so you get a better understanding of the projects that, that are still in the mayor's proposed versus the ones that are not and, and the dollars amount being allocated to those. So, I will turn it over to Shane first, and then, um, Rob and the mayor can chime in.
Okay. Thank you. Um, what we did this year was really start to digest that pavement management program that we had paid for to have done. And, um, so, I tried to set up the budget parameters that we, um, strove for on that study. We were looking at about two and a half million, uh, dollars in projects, so to speak. So, um, and we went through their five-year plan and carved out two and a half million dollars approximately for each of the five years that that plan was supposed to cover. And so, we used their year one as our priority, and we had already started doing a few of those in, um, sixteen and seventeen. But, um, ultimately, we just kinda went down, straight down through their list and started adding them into our program. And for the two thousand and eighteen budget, you know, I, I tried to grab as much of that in that two and a half million as we could. And, um, the mayor, um, when she received it, I mean, she knew full well what the intentions of the pavement management system was and reluctantly, um, had to make some cuts to keep the budget balanced. And, uh, so, I think she's made some reasonable choices on projects that she, um, chose not to fund that we'll just have to pick up at a later date. So, with regard to that, the only other comments I'll have is that, that pavement management system covers three different things. We looked at, um, it's part of our mill and overlay, it's part of our seal coat, and it's part of our reconstruction costs. And we're taking all the resources that we have to, to get to that two and a half million. Um, one of the key budget things that we have, uh, is from the state, we get those STP funds annually, and our projected, uh, funding for the next installment, I believe it was eight hundred thousand. That, that was the seventeen, but that's, but we didn't spend that in seventeen, I don't think. But, okay. So, anyway, we're at about seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand a year input from that program. Um, and we're incorporating that into our improvements as well. So, I guess that, that kinda caps how we're trying to approach these improvements.
The budget is increased for twenty eighteen over what we spent in twenty seventeen. So, it's an overall increase in spending. It's just not as much of an increase in spending as was requested.
And, and the one thing I'll point out in the storm sewer and flood control, um, in the past, we've kind of, we've had a line item for miscellaneous drainage improvements. They've never really been identified. It's just a line item that was put there as a placeholder in case something came up that needed to be addressed and, and could be done with those funds. Um, because there's specific projects identified, um, the logic there was those would have been projects that we would have tagged that miscellaneous drainage improvement money for. And so, it didn't feel that we needed both of them, um, either identify the projects or leave it open to see what comes up. And I think it's always better to identify the project because then you put manpower and resources to getting that done versus waiting to see what happens, and sometimes it happens and sometimes it doesn't. So, um, I'm, I'm always a fan of, of just get a project in place and you're more likely to, to get it done. Um, so, I, I think it's a, a good thing to start going around and, and identifying some of those and putting pen to paper and, and, and identifying where those are. And, and it allows the public to know too what areas of town are going to be looked at, especially for that storm sewer and, and drainage issues. So, um, that's the reason why, um, that two hundred thousand was decreased because there's other projects that were identified that would have been used with that money for eighteen. So, if, if there isn't any identifiable projects, then that two hundred thousand will probably come back in as, as a placeholder like it's been in previous years in case something does come up that requires, um, some dollars allocated to it to, to take care of any type of storm sewer or drainage issues. So, that's about all I know about streets and storm sewer and drainage. So.
Are, are we doing anything specifically in here in regards to drainage to the cherry drive issue? Is that the some, is that the, uh?
We, we have a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for some, some type of improvement this year.
Okay, is that the East Woods Drainage?
Correct.
Okay.
Is the, is the fifty thousand for Lake Hameska comprehensive plant, is that, I'll circle back to a question I asked earlier. Is that the engineering study that we had talked about several months ago?
Correct. Yeah.
Hey, if nobody has any more questions on the street and storm sewer, we'll go to recreation facility improvements. Um, you can see the. Um you can see the requests and the mayors proposed. Um there weren't um a whole lot of changes, other than um. The wellness center improvements included um a request to add a parking lot. And that was removed, I think they were thinking they could do that um a little bit cheaper or do kind of a milling type one versus a full additional asphalt parking lot. But um if you guys have any questions, um the parking wreck folks have been waiting awfully patiently in the back there. In the cheap seats, so if you guys have any questions, you can sure ask them.
I have a question on the uh golf course projects. Hey, come on up. Um it it looks like we're replacing two greens, eight and nine red, is that what you're looking at doing?
I guess I shut it off, well, we'd have to look at, Todd is here too, and we'd have to look at. Just to see how far a hundred thousand dollars would take us on those projects, we got uh three of the old push-up style greens yet, that's uh. One and two blue and eight red, and then we got nine red, which is uh basically a poor. Poorly constructed uh green, that's problem, and I'll let Todd share too.
Um this project would entail trying to bring the rest of the golf course to a consistent level throughout. We did the project on the yellows uh a couple of years ago and the whole, the whole. Scope of this is to make a consistent. Facility throughout, uh it will help with some of the maintenance issues, uh fertilizing selections. Where I'm not using, I can use more consistent products throughout versus drainage and. This type of product and chemical on these greens, watering considerations, things along those lines, and from a playability standpoint. That's one of the biggest gripes that everybody has as a golfer coming in is that. Why aren't all these greens consistent, this one plays different than this one, and and some of that's uh the huge consideration with that. The, that would be for the old push-up styles, those three greens. What we discovered in recent soil testing and in the past is that. Prior to my arrival here, there was a few issues with some of the construction, they weren't built exactly correctly. Uh some of the materials that were used um weren't of the right. Size and sieve and all that to achieve some of the drainage things, we've had some recurring issues out there that. We continue to fight with to this day, so that's part of where we're going with this. Uh with the two greens, it's a, it's a project that can be done relatively quickly in the fall again. Uh minimize, we'd be waiting till after Labor Day minimizing some of the. The disruption to our our midsummer play, so.
I have a question, Jay, um you know, I know for some time we've budgeted, I think it's been a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the bike trails. Um and I and I know there's been discussion in the recent past about accelerating that process and trying to finish that loop around the lake. And um do do we want to look at more funding for that at this point in time?
Well, you know, right now, uh we just opened today some bids for trail RFPs to finish the three point six mi- five miles that remain to uh. Connect the trail around Lake Kapeska and uh you know, so we'll be reviewing them real shortly here and um. Then that'll go before the park board and the city council, and by the time we get that. Process done and they would get their survey completed, you know, probably that would be something we'd look at more for next year if we'd really want to. I think the hundred and seventy-five thousand, cause I'm just thinking that it's doubtful that we'll get a project in twenty eighteen. That probably that would be more appropriate for twenty nineteen.
Where would you apply these funds then, this year for the bike trail, where would that go?
Well, kind of just building up the funds, I think right now we have a balance of around six hundred thousand, is that about right, Shelley? And so this would add to that, that you know, we can probably fund some of those projects with exist- existing funds.
We've done that in the past, right, where we have accumulated our budgeted dollars into a a fund, restricted fund, I suspect. Or.
Yeah, not really.
Purpose for that anyway, that.
Yeah.
And then, once we have enough dollars to make it worth our while to do it, but Jay, the three point some miles, is that gonna complete it around the lake?
That will finish the loop around the lake.
Okay, is that what you were?
Right, and I and I, do you have any estimate idea what the cost might be?
For the RFPs? Uh what would you say uh cost would be mil- seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a mile, Shane?
It's.
At least?
It's at least that, I, we've got, the portion that's left, of course, is the portion that has the most challenges, so for us to. Realistically throw a dollar amount at the total. Cost of that project is probably a little premature, that's why we actually went went to this RFP process was that somebody has more time and. Uh and can help us identify those problem areas in more detail, can give us a better idea what. That cost is gonna be, so we can budget for it, so that's the first step of the the process is getting this RFP done and getting that study done. Um so then we know what, how much funding we need and how many years it's gonna take, is it a two-year project, is it a three-year project? Um you know, are we gonna partner with the state crossing the state park, are we gonna have to go around the state park? Through wetlands, I mean, those are the challenges that this RFP hopefully gives us answers for, um. So on a side note, I I don't want us to just think that we have to focus on. The remaining portion around the lake, which is a key priority, but. Jay and I have already started to identify smaller segments that need some work, uh for instance, we could finish the. Short segment that's not completed in Memorial Park, we can finish a portion along. Twenty-first Street where there's a gap between Foundation Fields and Cook Complex. We've got other bike trail projects on the horizon that we've been talking about and we really just need to. Decide if we're gonna make a commitment to taking on some of the small projects as well as identifying how we're gonna approach this big project.
There was a trails committee that was established and put a lot of work into this and a lot of prioritization and. The segments of the, you know, kind of the wish list of and prioritization of how we wanted to proceed with that and then. I I would certainly enlist that, you know, that group, we we hired First District as well to help with that, we paid good money for. Some of the research and the studies that they did, so I would certainly hope that we would utilize that information. If we start, I I don't mean to sound negative, but willy-nilly decide, now let's put a chunk over here, you know, so.
Shane, with those those smaller projects that you're referring to, would the, would they possibly done in twenty seventeen yet, or is that also looking like that wouldn't hap- and nothing would happen this year?
Maybe a possibility, Shane, would you say?
Well, I did ask Milo Ford from the county to verify that we. Had the authority to, or or the blessing to go in and grade out and finish the bike trail in Memorial Park, I have not. Heard back from Milo and and make an excuse for both of us, we're probably both very busy and just haven't had a chance to contact each other, but. Um that was a key step in in my mind, that I wanted to verify that the county was willing and ready to let us finish that trail segment. The other trail segment um that we we had been working on some preliminary information along Twenty-first Street. Um along the ri- uh airport property and and like I said, in that stretch between Foundation Fields and Cook Complex and. One of the key components there was I needed to have the blessing of the FAA to um. Build the bike trail where I thought it made sense to build and uh it got rebutted on that. They'll allow us to build it in the ditch, I wanted to move the bike trail out of the ditch, but they said no, no closer to the airport than. Already exists, so we have have to change our approach to that project a little bit, but um. Again, that seems to be to be a missing link right there, um.
Yeah, that's definitely a s- a safety aspect along there.
Yeah, and.
Where that gap is.
And ever since I came here, I've been talking to Jay about um, we really don't have a bike trail to our swimming pool. Um we, and we'll need to start identifying routes to the uh soccer complex and now the new softball field, so we we have a lot more. After we get this lake RFP done, I think Jay and I should probably start talking about. Getting an RFP from somebody to identify and. Propose a routes to connect all these facilities we're building, I mean, it it makes sense to have them.
I would recommend that you get the band back together.
Yep, sounds right, sounds right.
Yeah, that was last, I think in like twenty twelve, but they did identify finishing the lake as their top priority in that study and then they. I don't know, remember all the segments offhand, but they did identify many other segments throughout the community to uh make trail improvements.
Yeah, I think we actually, at the end, end of the day, I think we had, cause I was a part of that committee, I think we kinda whittled it down to about three. You know, and I know we did jump in when we did the that section over on the on Willow Creek Drive. You know, up to the, past the bridge there, yeah, there's a safety issue for people coming across nineteenth and.
Right, yeah.
Yep. So I understand the proposal that you are getting, the RFP is for the design work?
Correct.
Routing and design.
Public input meetings, that type of thing, wetland mitigation, all those types of issues, so. We know going forward, when we wanna actually bid out a project, we know what we're looking at when we, once we get going.
Any other questions on the recreation facility improvement portion?
Uh in regards to the the zoo improvement, the building, how is that different from what has come to us before?
Well, it's less money and I would like to uh invite Dale Christensen from uh the Lake Area Zoological Society to come up and kind of. Share what the society is looking at doing as a partner in that project. Dan, you can come up here if you want.
Well, I guess one of the things that I wanted to talk about, first of all, is we're probably the only facility that doesn't have a heated building. Uh we have twenty-six buildings, uh we have pumps, we have gates, we have fences. Uh caging material, we could go on and on about the type of equipment hand, but yet we have no building to do this work in. It just doesn't make, if you were a business person, I think you would put a shop in a facility like that, you would. Right now, we're working, we're working in a truck or we're working in an unheated building. Where he, when we're working in a heated building, it was a hundred degrees in there where he's working, cause it's near a freezer. And just from that standpoint of view, I I think it's, I think it's needed. I ain't going all the just and all the justification, but right now we have no place to do things. As far as outsourcing, we wouldn't have to outsource as much that we're doing right now, that we have to do in the winter. Getting prepared in the spring, we could work in a heated shop instead of having, doing this bu- this work when it gets warmer outside right now. Uh we don't have any place for our vehicles to go, so every morning we have to start them up in an unheated barn. Or a cold storage area, and of course, this would save money if we had the sixty by forty shop, we used to have a shop building there. We built the the children's zoo and we built the otter exhibit and they took the building out, so since then, we've had no place to work. And I just think it's really important to have that, anybody that owned a business would have a facility like that.
I'm Dale Christensen, been on the Zoo Society for probably nearly forty years, I didn't really have to have much, I didn't need to say anything, Jay, but as long as I'm here, I will. Uh we've identified this project for the last three or four years as a priority, uh we're willing to put money in it, probably half of the cost. Uh but as a personal side, speaking on my own behalf, not on behalf of the Zoo Society, I, you know. I think we'd rather do projects and not build storage, we'd not build buildings for this purpose, I think it'd be probably better built by the city. But uh if it has to be, we're willing to pay half of the funds, uh but we'd rather do educational projects and things that add. To the value of our visitors, to hold them here longer and be a a better economic project for. Our zoo because the longer they stay here, the more money they spend in town and uh Mayor Williams was. Very instrumental in coming up with the idea of approving that zoo and that's uh what we'd rather do with our funds at the Zoo Society, but. Be as it may, we're willing to pay half of that project and it's a very important project, do you have any questions, Amy?
Where would, where would you guys like to put that building out?
We'd put it where the house used to be, the zoo house, so when you first came in, you'd be there, the trucks would be there, it's a centralized location, okay?
I I guess I would just comment, I I sit in on most of those Zoo Society uh meetings, just as an observer or visitor, I guess is how I'm uh designated. Um there isn't a meeting that goes by that there isn't some need expressed for a shut this shop building winter or summer. And I I do wanna draw your attention to a a number on the uh, on the uh, the first or I guess the second page. Um Dale ma- made reference to the Zoo Society willing to kick in a half the cost, go to the pre- the previous page. Um if you look under the revenue sources, there's miscellaneous uh or other financing sources, eighty-nine, four fifty. Uh that that is the fifty percent commitment that the Zoo Society is willing to put towards that. Uh and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, I think you even talked, had going up to as much as a hundred thousand at one point uh among, at your board meetings for funding this project.
That's correct.
That's a pretty big commitment for a nonprofit.
Any other questions for anybody on the recreational facility improvements? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. We will go on to the industrial park and other infrastructure. The twenty-five thousand for the fiber optics, um that is is something that came from Spencer at our, in our IT department. Um that's basically to um get, get us finished being connected, we have the fiber. But we don't have the, I don't know, the IT language guts to make it talk to each other. And so that's kind of the the missing link there and that's what that money will be used for. On the senior citizens building, normally, we set aside five thousand dollars a year for any repairs and maintenance that come up. Um during the budget process, I think Ken brought down, um there's some repairs. To um, if you remember, is it the awning in the front? That they're requesting be repaired, they got several quotes and um. Twenty thousand is basically what's gonna be needed to do that, and so at that point, the requests got increased. To twenty thousand to accommodate the um. Fixing of that building and the city does own that building and we're responsible for any maintenance costs um for that building. So um that's why that has been increased. Uh the GIS, uh again, that's that main, that yearly maintenance contract and then um. There was a request from the Upper Big Sioux Watershed Project for a lake inlet-outlet structure. For the five hundred thousand, that's not reflected in the mayor's proposed budget. Um but the Lake Kapeska Comprehensive Plan is something that was added and if you have any questions, like. The mayor can ex- can talk about that a little bit more, um or if you guys have any other questions on that section.
What is the, can we talk about the the, some detail about the the planned? Comprehensive plan for the lake, how that would be done, when it would be done, who would do it, type things?
We, I'm sure we would do an RFP and get a consultant.
Actually, I think we already went through that process and hired Clark here just a month ago, wasn't that that one?
No, that was for the um, the inlet-outlet structure.
Okay, all right, maybe I'm referencing wrong.
I thought that's what Clark was.
Yep, tha- that's true, I thought they were one and the same, I'm sorry.
No, the comprehensive plan's completely different. I, um, at least in my mind, I, what I envisioned, I don't remember that being part of the request, although it's showing a request. I thought there was just a five hundred thousand dollar request for an inlet outlet structure and I, I just don't think.
From, from the Upper Big Sioux, but you had requested the fifty thousand.
Right.
So that's why I put that in the request and the mayor's proposed.
I, I cut that down and changed it. It, I don't think we're ready for an inlet outlet structure project. Personally, I, not that I'm opposed to it, I, I just am not convinced that we have, that it would work first of all, and, um, that it would, we'd get what we paid for in the functioning of, of the lake to clean the water. Um, and that's why I took that out. Uh, a comprehensive plan could look at projects like that in a, um, maybe a higher level than we have. I wouldn't wanna just jump to that project without some serious consideration to make sure it's, it would function hydraulically. But the lake is, in my opinion, um, a resource that we are not optimizing as a community. And I would like to look at it from a, a lot more comprehensive view. Water quality's really important, um, flood control is very important. But we also have, um, recreation and commerce that we haven't really looked at. And maximizing our accessibility of the lake, you know, there's been a request for a marina at the lake, um, all those things. We should come together with a, a plan of attack on which of those projects is most important and which we should do first and approximately how much are these things going to cost? So that we know how much money to put aside for them and not just kinda grasp at individual projects as they come about. So that's what I'm thinking. I, I'd rather see, um, an overall look at the lake and how it fits in with our community, what the needs are, um, and, and how that lake can better serve our community and be kept healthy and thriving and, um, you know. If we could generate more income at the lake, we'd have more money that we could put toward projects like the inlet outlet structure. And, um, I just thought that was putting the cart before the horse.
I would, I would agree wholeheartedly behind that. And I'm glad to see that the scope of this is as broad as what you've just mentioned. I mean, it needs, it goes way beyond just quality of water and flood control. So I think the, the ability to use the lake and how to best use it and access it and being involved in that plan, I think is a, is a good way for us to go. I think that's, um, have we ever had, has there ever been a, a plan for the lake that, or is this a, a first of, or is this a re-vision or?
Plan includes the Lake Compeska area. And so we have brushed on it and the H two oh twenty project had elements which were, you know, a lot of people were very passionate about some of those things. And, and I think we can bring them together.
Okay, I, I, I'm a complete agree with, with both of you, but I wanna, I'm confused now. The fifty thousand that we've got budgeted, that is not Clark engineering then relative to the, that the inlet?
I thought it was, I wish Roger Foot was here, cause he could speak to that. But we did, we did invite Clark in, we did review like two or three engineering proposals and we, I believe that this council, or the previous council, uh, entered an agreement with Clark to do a study for the inlet.
For five hundred thousand?
No, for fifty.
Oh, well, I didn't see that request. I saw five hundred thousand for an inlet outlet structure in the budget request. And, I mean, you can put it back in there if you want, I, I'm just not convinced.
No, no, the, I, what I'll do is I'll go back through the minutes and find out where we, what we did with Clark. Cause I think that, that's the element.
He maybe had that wrapped into the five hundred.
But was that, was that focused on the dam? Cause I recall looking at, we had another community, we saw graphics and we saw pictures and, yeah, Aberdeen, that's right.
Correct. I mean, we, it, it was vetted just, just a few months ago and I, I, I'd have to look and see what month, but I believe the result was that the council awarded a contract to Clark.
I, oh, okay, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought it was in a work session that we were going to review it as an, as a budget out of twenty eighteen, but the, the figure fifty thousand was thrown out as an estimate.
Correct.
So that's why I thought this was.
Me too, me too. We'll, we'll look at it.
That's not how Roger presented it.
Okay.
At all.
But we, we did.
We did, we just gotta dig into it, I guess, and find out. But I, I, the five hundred thousand was never.
Do you remember the work session? And I.
And I was thinking we came out of there with some pretty positive vibes, but I don't remember how that culminated, but.
And, and the way his request came through, it was fifty thousand for engineering, four hundred and fifty thousand for construction, a total of five hundred thousand for the project. That's why the five hundred thousand is in there.
That was a specific project.
That was for the, the inlet outlet structure. He had engineering fifty thousand.
The engineering was focused on that project.
Right, construction four fifty, total five hundred. And none of that has been carried through and this fifty thousand is completely separate.
Do we need to be careful that we're not doubling up some kinda effort here?
Okay, uh, just for clarity, I just found it on the work session. It was a May fifteen work session. We discussed Lake Compestor Ma- Lake Compeska Master Plan and Outlet, uh, Silt Trap Proposal was presented at the May fifteenth work session. We need to go back to that date and look at what was discussed and maybe re-see where we're at with this. But what my gut instinct is, is that fifty thousand dollars was what we intended to get into a, a contract with Clark to do the study. And then whatever that study said would be the launching pad for funding a larger project. That's the way I understood the work session.
That's the five hundred thousand that Roger i- i-.
Could be.
Was giving us.
We'll have to engage Roger on the discussion.
But was it a comprehensive plan or was it a, was it engineering work or a study for specifically some type of a dam device? So to speak?
Well, I think.
Like Aberdeen, yeah.
I think they kinda go hand in hand. You need a master plan and then this would be a key component of the master plan, but.
But my point is, what the mayor has described far exceeds a individual project like what may or may not be referenced here. We just have to make sure that if we're, if this is different, we gotta make sure that we're not doubling up on what our efforts are. So, to me, if this is approved, it's somewhat a part of what we're already thinking and talking about as far as for fifty thousand dollars for engineering or study, whatever. So we, I think we need to find out what we have and we'll go from there tomorrow.
Okay, any other questions? State your name, Wade.
I keep her in the lake. I live on Pelican. I thought that was part of the city too, so I'm hoping your comprehensive plan will take Pelican into consideration as well as Compeska. That's it.
Okay, um, we'll, we'll move on. Um, the next one is debt service payments. And, um, unfortunately, we have committed to making these debt payments. And, um, so that's where I'm gonna tell you it is what it is. And, um, for twenty eighteen, that's what we're slated to pay for all of our either SRF loans or our bond payments. The next section is our transfers out. I'm gonna leave the two million dollar transfer out to the Capital Projects Fund until we talk about the Capital Projects Fund. And that's just because you kinda have to see the whole picture of the Capital Projects Fund. And I can't really talk about this without bringing up that whole thing and I wanna do that tomorrow. So just keep that in mind, that, um, if you add that, two million dollars, which again, it's not slated to come out of current resources. So when I told you that this was budget, this was balanced and you looked at the ten million versus the eight, you probably gave me a look, okay? Um, this two million would also come out of that capital, um, outlay, that capital outlay for future projects line item out of our restricted cash and not out of current, um, revenue sources that we're anticipating for twenty eighteen. And so, um, again, if you have any questions, just keep that in mind for tomorrow when we talk about the capital projects portion of it. The rest of it, um, that hundred and thirty thousand to the airport for their capital projects, two hundred and fifty thousand, which is consistent with previous years for the park and rec, to help them, um, balance out their budget. And the two hundred and fifty to, um, nine one one, um, to help them balance their budget, which again, you'll, you'll see those in the revenue sources when we go through. Um, you've seen the airport one, you'll see the nine one one and the park and rec when we go through that. But, um, those are consistent transfers that we've used second penny money, which is allowable, um, per our ordinance, which was per state statute. So if you have any questions on any of those three transfers out, I can answer those. Otherwise, um, it is nine forty-five. And we still have all of park and rec. And so here's, here's the dilemma. We either have to ask these poor people to come back for another meeting. We either keep going and we're all really tired tomorrow. What do you guys wanna do?
What do you park folks wanna do?
It all depends on how many questions you guys have for them on their various departments. Um, if, if you don't have a lot and we just basically go through and you just ask your questions and we don't ask them to make presentations on anything, we could be done in thirty minutes. If they do a presentation and you ask a lot of questions, I mean, it's taken two hours in the past.
I don't know, we, we've got a four million dollar budget here. I, I don't wanna rush through this. I mean, I, I don't wanna put you guys out, but I can see us easily spending an hour. We should be spending at least an hour on this.
In the past, it's, it's taken about, I looked in, in the last couple of years, hour and forty-five minutes to two and a half hours is usually what it takes to get through all the different divisions, including cemetery, forestry and now wellness center.
Would this require another night, you think?
We, we could do that. Um, we have a pretty full slate for tomorrow night as well. Um, you know, some of those will go a little bit faster, cause they're just, they're kinda more informational than they are, um, having some questions. But I, I can't say that we're not gonna be at this very same place tomorrow night, um, having more departments than time.
Would it, would it work to start earlier tomorrow night, I'm asking?
Wednesday?
We already published it, didn't we?
We've, yeah, it's, it's within the twenty-four hours, so it would have to be a different night completely. Right, you need to give a twenty-four hour notice prior to the meeting. So, um, we would have, we'd be able to do that if everybody was available Thursday. I mean, that's, that's really short notice. And so is Dan. I think Dan is gone this entire week, I believe. One, two, three, yeah. So we're, Thursday's basically out. And I can send, um, maybe an email, but I guess for, for these folks, would, should we start off with, with the park and rec and, and, um, have a subsequent meeting at another time if we can't get through?
Shelley, we, we have our CIP hearing next Tuesday, right? Scheduled for next Tuesday, right?
Oh, okay.
I, I, I believe, I mean.
I don't have my calendar.
I have my calendar. It's like Tuesday.
I mean, if, if we were, cause we're already planning on that night, could we do another budget night that night and push the CIP back?
We, we sure could.
I guess that, that would be my recommendation.
We sure could. So are you asking them to come back tomorrow at six o'clock? Or you want them to come back next Tuesday? I don't think TV land cares, so how about you guys back there? Do you guys wanna come back tomorrow and start at six? That'd be six.
I think they deserve to go first.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, whatever night you, you'll either be the only department we go through or you'll be the first department we go through, so either way.
Shelley, does it, the, the, don't we have, don't we have to do a notification for if we add another night?
If we added an, I would, I haven't made an agenda for next Tuesday. So basically tomorrow, we just add the park and rec, forestry cemetery, wellness center to the agenda.
So we do, we could tomorrow and then we could add something to next Tuesday, is that what?
Right, right, cause an agenda hasn't been formed for that one, so.
Wouldn't it make more sense to push what we didn't get done tonight out to the Tuesday meeting? So that people that publicly have looked at tomorrow's agenda and are planning to come, maybe, both public people and staff, just stays the course.
It, it's, it's up to you guys and, and how you guys wanna do that.
It would make sense to me to do it that way and push.
Okay, so has everybody determined that, that we will, um, stop going through the budget process and anything we didn't get done will be moved to next Tuesday at six PM? Is that?
There, there, there was nothing that we needed to do at our council meeting Monday relative to the budget, correct?
No, no, we just, we need to have, um, some sort of direction so that we can get the ordinance completed prior to the September sixth. September sixth, fifth. Okay, so, um, I will make a note in the minutes that these have been moved to next Tuesday starting at six PM and an agenda will be posted to that effect. And so with that, um, I will turn it back over to the mayor for the rest of the meeting.
All right, any old business? Any new business? Liaison member reports? Need for executive session? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, bye, solemn, second by Bueller, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.